Difficult for us to find you on this list, so please, if at all possible, leave your audio on. Hit record. And I'll give it probably fifteen, twenty seconds and we'll be good to go. Difficult for us, difficult for us to find you on this list, so please, if at all possible, leave your audio. What?
He's asking music for the boat ride.
Yeah.
And Joy came back, she said seventies disco.
Should be good to go.
Thank you, Joe. I'm John Gregg. I'm the mayor of the town of Seabrook Island. We are convened today, the twenty-sixth of October, twenty twenty-one, for the October Town Council meeting. And to get things started, I will ask that the town clerk confirm that notice of this meeting has been posted as is appropriate and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act have been satisfied.
They have.
Thank you for that. The first order of business on our agenda is the minutes from prior meetings we dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance and Calling Roll. So to begin, we have several sets of minutes to be approved. All members of council should have been provided copies of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Town Council Public Hearing of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Town Council Public Hearing of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the Town Council Public Hearing of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Those minutes are approved. Next up, we have the Town Council Meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Town Council Meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the Town Council Meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye. So the minutes are approved unanimously. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Meeting Minutes for the Meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee Meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one? Hearing none. Please signify your approval of the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee Meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one as presented by saying aye.
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 Aye. That makes it unanimous. Next up, we have the Town Council Budget Workshop of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the minutes of that meeting. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Town Council Budget Workshop of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of those minutes as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye. That makes it unanimous. Last, we have the Town Council Budget Workshop of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Town Council Budget Workshop of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of those minutes as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye. That makes it unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have the report of the town financials for the month of September. I give that report. The total fund balance for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one was six million, two hundred thirteen dollars, two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, an amount of about eight hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars more than the balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and about one million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars more than for the same period of twenty nineteen. Unrestricted revenue for September totaled fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. And unrestricted revenue for the year totaled one million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars. The year-to-date amount representing about ninety-four percent of the twenty twenty-one annual budget and being about two hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars more than for the same period in twenty twenty. Expenditures for September totaled seventy-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-three, and expenditures for the year totaled seven hundred one seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Year-to-date amount about fifty percent of the twenty twenty-one annual budget. Expenditures for the year were about thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two more compared to the same period of twenty twenty. Excess of expenditures over revenues was seventeen thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars for the month of September. An excess of revenues over expenditures for the year was five hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars compared to an excess of revenues over expenditures of about three hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty, reflecting the significantly greater revenue in the period this year as compared to the same period of twenty twenty. That concludes the report of the town financials for the month of September. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We are now at the October public hearing. Ordinarily, we would have held a public hearing in advance of the council meeting. This agenda calls for the public hearing to come in this place in the agenda. We have three ordinances on the agenda for today's public hearing. I invite public comments following introduction of the ordinances. Anyone wishing to comment is asked to identify the ordinance for which they are offering comments. Anyone participating in the video conference and wishing to comment concerning one of the ordinances may do so by clicking the raise hand button under the participants tab. Anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning any of the ordinances may do so by pressing star nine to raise your hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand to speak only once. Every effort will be made to call on all speakers in the order they have raised their hands. When called on to speak, please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you and do not hear anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself. If we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which to provide their comments. Each speaker will be informed when there are thirty seconds remaining. Once allotted time expires, the speaker's audio will again be muted. The ordinances are as follows. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter Thirty-two, Waterways and Beaches, Article Two, Beachfront Management, Division Two, Restrictions, Section Thirty-two dash forty-two Vehicle Use, so as to amend the requirements relating to the operation of motor vehicles on the beaches of Seabrook Island. Essentially, this ordinance will allow for the operation of what are described as Class One Pedal Assist Bicycles on the beach. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve and ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the consideration of zoning map amendments, that is rezonings, annexation requests, and certain subdivision approvals for a period of not to exceed one hundred and eighty days. The use of this moratorium is to allow for the orderly adoption of the revised design standards development ordinance of the town. We have a new development standards ordinance that's in the process of adoption. Finally, we have ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Financial Administration, Division Two, Purchasing Requirements, so as to amend the policies and procedures related to the procurement of goods and services by the town. The amendment of our procurement practices is brought forward by our town administrator to bring improved policies, for one thing, to our practices and to align the points that separate the requirements for having a full required request for bids as opposed to having abbreviated processes. With that, anyone wishing to comment on any of the ordinances may, as I said, indicate their desire to make comments by raising their hands. Joe, will you let me know if you see anyone raising their hand?
I will. We don't have any raised at the moment. Give it a few seconds. If we don't get any, then you can move on. All right. I am not seeing any raised, so I will assume there are no comments on the public hearing items.
Thank you for that, Joe. At this time, there having been no residents indicating their desire to make comments, I will now call for adjournment of the public hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning adjournment of the public hearing? Hearing none. All in favor of adjourned the public hearing, please signify your approval to adjourn the public hearing by saying aye.
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 That makes it unanimous. Yeah, public hearing is now adjourned. Next on the agenda, we have citizens and guest presentations and comments. First, we have presentations. We have four citizen presentations on the agenda. Each presenter will be allowed up to seven and one-half minutes for their presentation. Once a presenter is introduced, they will be unmuted until the earlier of expiration of the allotted time or their declaration that they have concluded their presentation. Thereafter, the next presenter will be introduced. I will now introduce the first of the presenters, Ted Flervidge. Pardon me for murdering your name.
No problem. Everybody does it. Hello?
Yes, please proceed. Give your presentation. Seven and one-half minutes.
Mr. Cronin, could you put the first slide up, please?
I believe our clerk has it.
Sorry, I'm currently working on it to pull it up. Hang on one moment, please.
Just proceed. My name's Ted Flurlagie. I am a resident of the island. My wife and I have been here for about a year and a half now. I'm sitting here in my family room looking out at the sixth green of Crooked Oaks Golf Course, and I can't imagine a more wonderful place to be living. We say that very often when we go down to the point and watch the sunset or eat dinner at Pelican Watch. It's a fabulous place to live. There are times, though, when it becomes kind of hectic and the character of the residents, which I consider the island to be, our residents changes. And that's when there are a lot of people who are short-term rentals who are showing up and used categorized as, the club is supposed to be a private club. There are times when we can't use the facilities that we want to use, and it's not all COVID-related. It's because it's too busy and it's too congested, and there are too many people running around who aren't following what are the rules. Back in August, I tried to get the town council and the mayor interested in a referendum to see if we had interest in establishing a cap on short-term rentals in Seabrook. And I actually submitted questions, which I'll try to get to later. That would be referendum questions. They've been modified, and I've submitted them three times since then in the direction of forming, of having a referendum, which would be a special vote to establish whether the majority of Seabrook Island residents want to see a cap on short-term rentals. No one has referred to that. It's been a part of the agenda for the Ways and Means Meeting in October. It's a part of the agenda today. It's on the amended agenda. If you could go to the first slide, Ms. Watkins, thank you. The bottom line is, what we're trying to do is get a referendum to find out how the majority of people feel. We are not trying to stop rentals. We're not trying to stop short-term rentals. There's no effort to end the process of renting houses or condominiums on Seabrook Island. We're trying to stop it where it is and evaluate whether or not we need to do anything else. If you hear, if you're listening to this and that the goal of this committee, this Preserve Seabrook Committee, is to is to stop the process of rentals on Seabrook, they're lying to you. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to get this to a vote so that we can tell the town council and the mayor, yes, we do, or no, we do not want to put a cap on short-term rentals. Now, the slide that's up right now is, no, the one that's up right now is Sweetgrass Realty. That is a real estate firm that's right across from Town Hall. Mr. Mayor, if you look out your window, you can probably see it. It is a solicitation that is sent out and has been sent out to a number of our neighbors, including neighbors in the single-family residential areas. And what it is, is a letter and a rental management agreement, a contract, that solicits rentals. In summation, the letter says, "Twenty twenty-one has been an incredible year for our rental owners, and we hope you consider Sweetgrass as you plan for your twenty twenty-two rental season. Things are already booking up really fast." And I included that because it shows the trend. There was a, there was an historical perspective on Seabrook Island that appeared in The Seabrooker and has appeared on two other occasions in publications for the public to review, and this was September twenty twenty-one. Ms. Finkie wrote it, and it goes back and talks about Seabrook as originally, you can go to the next slide, Ms. Watkins. That one, yeah. It goes, it talks about Seabrook and the history of Seabrook dating back to when it was a resort community, which went bankrupt. The original resort community failed. What happened was, and the next page, Ms. Watkins, there's a blow up of part of page one of The Seabrooker. This is September twenty twenty-one. If you read along with me, the town of Seabrook Island was not incorporated until nineteen eighty-seven. There were sixteen years development activity prior, during which there were many disagreements between property owners, residents, and developers. While it is generally the accepted history that resident property owners voted overwhelmingly to incorporate to avoid annexation by the city of Charleston, it is also very true that they wanted to control the character of the island. Residents, people who live here, people who vote here, vote here, just like us and just like the people on the Preserve Seabrook Committee. We want to control the character of our island, and I think we have the right to do that, and I think that's acknowledged. On the next page of Ms. Finkie's article, if you go to the next page, this is on the same article continued from page one. If you go to the next blow up. Ms. Watkins, thank you. What Ms. Finkie goes on to say is that there have been many intervals during the island's history when resort guests, renters, outsiders, tourists, or whatever the favorite current term is for our visitors comprised a much larger percentage of the people on the island week to week than we experience now. As a parenthetical, I believe that's probably true because going way back into the eighties and nineties, there were fewer single-family homes on the island. There were fewer full-time residents, and it was more of a resort community, at least the character of it was. That's changed. There are now fifteen hundred and fifty or so residences on the island. There are almost as many single-family residences as there are the original condos and regime houses that have more of a percentage of rental. And Ms. Finkie, if you go back to the last slide, Ms. Finkie went on to say, just a bit of history for context, because property owner- Pardon?
There's one minute left?
Property owners' residences twenty, thirty, forty years ago voiced the same familiar complaints about too many renters. This is something the town council needs to address and needs to address now. Every other community, which is comparable to ours, in coastal Carolina has done so. Daniel Island, for example, the city of Charleston, if you own a single-family house on Daniel Island, Section Three of the cap of the code that was enacted for Charleston County says you need to live in your house if you're going to rent it. We don't have something like that, and we've become an investment target. We are now a target because we don't have controls on short-term rentals. There are now three hundred people who signed the online petition. Hundred and sixty people signed the hard copy, which is a part of the agenda here. And there are referendum questions that I have submitted. Page sixty-five of the agenda is the referendum questions that I put together last August and amended for September. The referendum questions are simple. What we need to do is ask the people who live here and vote here, do you want caps on rentals? We need to do that. It's high time we've done it. It should have been done twenty, thirty, forty years ago. It wasn't. And that's why we feel the pressure of having too many people on the island. The character of our island is at risk of changing for the foreseeable future. The trend is more rentals. We've gone from five oh one to five ten, and the trend-
Do you have any closing remarks? Because that was seven minutes-
Is, our group is not trying to stop the process of renting. We want to control it. We think we have the right to control in the single-family developments and on the island itself. The limits are twenty percent, five percent, that we've suggested, but again, this is just a referendum. It would be for the town council to consider, to committee vote, and then determine whether or not an ordinance should be amended that goes with our current twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash fourteen, which is the business license statute. I guess that's it. It's time we do something. We have to do it quickly, I believe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation by Paul McLaughlin. Seven and a half minutes, Mr. McLaughlin.
We're just waiting for- Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. My name, I have an amended version. I'm using, I'm using a different version that appears on my remarks for time purposes, so it doesn't exactly reflect it. So there's no need to show those as I go through the document. Thank you and good afternoon. I live at thirty-sixty-one Baywood. In my remarks, I'm going to focus on the voters and the process for the petition and the requested ballot question regarding the grandfathering and capping of short-term rentals in the town of Seabrook. I will speak for the group who organized the effort and the three hundred-plus Seabrook voters who by word and signature share our views and empowered us to be their voice today. The Preserve Seabrook Work Group approached this effort with an Africa Shared View. The short-term rental industry on Seabrook was growing and expanding at an alarming rate, threatening this place we all love and undermining the quality of life that drew us to buy, live, and vote here. I purposely selected the word industry to reflect what Ted shared from one property managed solicitation, which clearly reflects the strategy and goals of those who wish to turn Seabrook from a special place into a moneymaker for investors and their businesses. This growing industry is seen across the island and especially in the villas where, for example, thirty percent of the summer wind properties are short-term rentals and how the constant flow of large numbers of guests is affecting the quality of life for all those who do not rent. As you well know, I took a stab at trying to get this issue addressed when I proposed to this body a citizens' commission to study and address the problem of short-term rentals in a comprehensive manner. The proposal was summarily rejected without explanation. Further, this body said any group of citizens can, could come together and present their concerns, and they would be heard. So a group of like-minded people came together and determined we needed to know whether our concerns about the growth of short-term rentals, of the short-term rental industry, were shared by other voters. So we decided to act. The group spent a considerable amount of time discussing and outreach and data gathering strategy. However, we wanted to the process to avoid putting any pressure on anyone to respond in a manner that affirmed our perspective. We were mindful of possible false attacks of bias and intimidation if we'd acted otherwise. We also wanted to support rules and the postal laws, and therefore, we mailed and we secured from the state the current list of registered voters and mailed by first class to fifteen hundred households the letter and explained our case contained in the proposed language for a non-binding referendum and asked those who agreed to express their support on an online petition on change.org. Except for the letter, there was no lobbying on our part. In a matter of two to three weeks, there were, there were in our over three hundred voters who expressed support for the proposition on change.org. In fact, more continued to sign up every day. We made every effort to verify the sign-in with the voter list. In the letter, there was also an email address included where people could say what they wanted, and they did. Only one person objected to a proposal because he wanted special exclusion based on seniority residence status. Every other person who sent me an email weighed in on the proposal, expressed support, talked about how disrupted short-term rentals are in their daily lives and how frustrated they are about the town's failure to serve and protect their interests while showing deference towards short-term rental owners and property managers. In addition, a number of voters found my name in the phone book and called, and they went on in much greater detail. In fact, three owners who go back thirty-five years made special points to saying the characterization history written about Seabrook as a resort was not accurate and was misleading, and they detailed their concerns. It also be claimed that it became clear this body, council and mayor, and the committee in monthly meetings was and remains the best ambivalent about doing anything to stop the growth of short-term rentals. In fact, many see a desire by this body to have rentals grow in number. Therefore, we decided to reach out to the three hundred who signed the online petition and ask for physical signatures on a paper petition. Despite many unlisted phone numbers and others being away, Despite many unlisted phone numbers and others being away, we were able to secure a hundred and, sorry, a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and seventy signatures. Pardon me. It also became clear to us that, that the town, I'm sorry, a little bit, I'm jumping around. Bear with me for a second. Sorry, I'm just, it also became clear to us that we, that, that the, in conversations with voters, because we reached out to people, that there was concern about short-term rentals, what was happening to their community, et cetera. They were also, they were also concerned about how the town was responding, that they appeared, that it appeared the town was more concerned about income from short-term rentals, the concerns of non-voters who don't live on the island, and for people who profited. And they were very concerned about this matter, and they wanted us to express that to you. Today's list of speakers is another reflection of this concern about seemingly preference towards and concern for the rental industry. And it's reflected where five speakers that were scheduled to speak do not appear on the list of Seabrook voters provided by the state a couple of months ago, and our clients are coastal getaways. Two others have financial interests in businesses that prosper from the short-term rental industry. Also, according to county tax records, it appears one non-voting speaker today lives in a community that has among the most restrictive short-term rental rules in the Charleston area. If this is so, how ironic. Moving on, some have said that we only have three hundred signers who are voters. Our response is the current council received just over four hundred votes in the last election, and the mayor needs just one more vote than the leading write-in to be elected. If these numbers work for the election, our three hundred work for the asking for the ballot to be put before, for a question. As for the cost of conducting the ballot, the town has certainly ample resources. Finally, with everyone we spoke, finally, everyone we spoke with knows and understands, because we made it clear, the cap on short-term rentals we are proposing to be voted on will not fix the problem, but does halt the growth and allows the town, SPOA, and the club to step back and look at the present situation and consider next steps to preserving Seabrook. Fixing the-
One minute left?
-by over five hundred short-term rentals is going to take time and considerable effort, but in every recovery, a doctor must stop the regression of the illness as the step in curing the ailment. Voters and citizens are asking you to listen to them and give us a voice in this matter. We want our say in a non-binding referendum where we can formally and without prejudice or intimidation, express our wishes on grandfathering and capping short-term rentals on Seabrook and retaining the current zoning ordinance purpose language governing single-family residential zones. Let me add, recent statements by one prominent property manager that alleges this effort is about doing away with short-term rentals, rentals are lies. This is simply about an effort proposing a cap on the growth at about twenty percent with a grand provision for existing residents and on the island, and asking voters to express their views. There's nothing in the materials that Preserve Seabrook has published that says otherwise. So stop the lies. This proposal would not take away anything from any current short-term rental owner. This is the truth. Our question to those who oppose a referendum is simple. Why do you fear giving Seabrook voters a non-binding voice? Are we stupid? Are we selfish? Are our voices not important? The mayor and the council are now asking for our votes in a few days. So are we not capable of voting in November?
Sir, closing remarks?
It's in your lap, and we look forward to favorable action by this body. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. And next up, we have Nancy Buck. Nancy, if you will, you have seven and a half minutes.
I spoke. Who's speaking? I can't hear.
No one is speaking.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Nancy Buck. My husband and I, Randy, first purchased our first property here on Seabrook Island in two thousand and two. We have been permanent residents since two thousand and eleven. We also, we, over the years, we have owned five different properties on Seabrook. We also are the owners of Coastal Getaways, which is a rental management company that does handle the rentals of over two hundred properties on Seabrook. In my presentation, I'll be addressing these issues, discussing current rentals, rental history, the increase in island population, and reflections on the short-term rental petition. Catherine, I mean, are you able to change these as I'm going? Or do I need to tell you to change them? Okay, thank you. Current rentals. Currently, there are eleven hundred and seventy-five villas, condos, and townhomes on Seabrook. Four hundred and eleven of them are rentals, so approximately thirty-five percent are rentals. There are eleven hundred and eighty-eight residential homes, ninety-eight which are rentals, or, or equivalent of eight, approximately eight percent. So overall, we have approximately twenty-two percent of all the properties on Seabrook are rentals. This is, this also takes into account anyone who rented for the PGA when they could only rent, so they only rented for a week. We have several owners who only rent Memorial Day to Labor Day. People rent to help offset their costs, taxes, insurance, and club fees. In the past three years, there has been a slight increase in rentals. We had four hundred and seventy-two in two thousand and nineteen. Currently, we are at five hundred and ten. There were five hundred and forty previously this year, but thirty have been withdrawn due to the sale of property. Primarily, we're sticking with the same percentage of about twenty-two percent of the new owners will rent. The majority do not rent. Rentals are definitely not exploding on Seabrook. The majority of people who purchase on Seabrook have rented in the past. The cycle of rent, the cycle of ownership is usually if you're going to rent, you rent three to five years to help offset your cost. The owners use it more and more each year for personal use. They decide if Seabrook's going to be where they want to stay, and if it is, then after about five years, they start looking for what you and I would consider a residential home, a real house. They renovate it, they move in, and then they sell their villa. The cycle repeats itself. The majority of permanent residents here on Seabrook started out either renting on Kiowa or Seabrook, bought a villa, and have moved up. Seabrook Island Real Estate will say that the major, the average ownership on Seabrook is three different properties. In March and through May of last, of two thousand and twenty, there was a short-term ban instituted on Seabrook. If you read next door during this time, people were complaining about how crowded the island was. Renters needed to go home. They were even posting pictures of license plates from out of state and telling people, renters, to go home. The irony of that situation is there were no renters on Seabrook. They were, it was increased owner use. Due to COVID, people, kids were out of school. People found out they could work from home, and Seabrook was a good place to come. Owners who didn't use their homes for months previously were using and staying in their homes for six months to a year this, in two thousand and twenty. With the short-term ban, we had, we've had an increase also of permanent residents from thirty-five percent to fifty-four percent. That allot's for a lot of the crowdedness on Seabrook, too. We all know when you first purchase a home on Seabrook, the first couple of years, everybody, relatives, and friends come out of the woodwork because you now have a beach house. In July of this year, the week after Fourth of July, I received a call from a councilperson asking me what the difference was in rentals from July fourth to this week. There was no difference. We were sold out for the entire month of July. The difference was owner usage in, for the holiday. Many owners come down and use their places for the holidays. They can have as many people as they want in their houses, and that is fine. I'm an owner, too. We have company come down for the Fourth of July. We've had unprecedented usage by both owners and rental guests this past couple of years because of COVID. I do foresee a huge decline in owner usage as well as rentals in the next couple of years as foreign travel opens up and people feel more comfortable going out of, out of the country and resuming the trips they haven't taken for three years. The short-term ordinance went into effect April first and addressed safety and occupancy issues. We are very strictly adhering to those occupancy issues. A compliance officer was added to help, to help institute them and reinforce any complaints that were lodged. There were only six complaints lodged all summer, all year, as up into September for this. My recommendation would be, we see how the ordinance is in effect for at least a year and study the effect it has. Grandfathering the current rentals would not address any of the overcrowded issues that the petition is striking to, is, as asking to alleviate. All it does is ensure the people who are currently renting that they can continue to rent. The impact we will see would be on resale values of properties. If people can't rent, and I've received numerous calls and phone calls, even from people thinking of purchasing now, that if they can't rent, they will not be purchasing on Seabrook. The primary issue in all of this, and I said this with the ordinance previously, is the gate pass situation. The gate needs to, SPOA needs to address that rental guests should not be allowed to call in their own passes. This contributes significantly to the crowdedness of Seabrook. Once this is affected, and once this is taken care of, I think we will see the steady growth for rentals. I don't think we'll see all the overcrowdedness that people are complaining about. Revenue is very important. I understand that, and I also understand the petition is not trying to, to wipe out rentals completely, but put a cap on them.
One minute left?
Thank you. Villas, condos, and townhouses were originally built on Seabrook to, for rentals, and I would hope that they would be able to continue that. My recommendation is that this is a SPOA issue, not a town issue, as all residents should have the right to vote on this, not just the ones who reside here permanently. Rental guests are our new neighbors. They, they're the people that are buying property on Seabrook. We should welcome them. Everyone has a dream of living here on, in paradise, just like we have, and just like we have been fortunate to be here, fortunate enough to be here. We hope that we are all welcome, and we hope this does not divide the island and that we can all work together. I would like to, I would be more than happy to volunteer to be on a task force or a committee to study this issue further. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Ms., Mrs. Buck. And with that, the last presentation will be by Dr. William Marsteller. Seven and a half minutes, Dr. Marsteller.
Just trying to see where Mr. Marsteller is on the phone. Ms. Marsteller, if you are on the line, please raise your hand. Dr. Marsteller, are you on the Zoom call? Mayor Gregg, I believe he is not on, on the line.
All right, we will then proceed to comments. We have six citizens who will be acknowledged for comments. Each will be allowed five minutes for their comments. Once a commenter is introduced, they will be unmuted until the earlier expiration of the allotted time or their declaration that they have concluded their comments. Thereafter, the next commenter will be introduced. First of the commenters is David Pashkis. Pardon me for murdering your name.
All right, thank you. Pashkis, pretty close, but thank you for, for the time. I have a very brief comment. I, I'm a new owner. I just bought my home in Seabrook on June first, and I am one of the people that Nancy had, has spoken about that needs to rent my home to be able to afford to come down there as, as a second home. So I was down at my house for probably over six weeks since purchasing it, but I wouldn't be able to afford to do that without being able to rent. And while I understand the proposal is to grandfather in people that have been renting their home, I do need that flexibility, having bought at what's currently the top of the market. If I find myself in a position where I may need to, to sell my home in the, in the coming years ahead, being that I'm far from retirement, unfortunately, anything that could hinder my ability to, to make a profitable return on my investment, such as the inability to rent my home for future owners, would be something I would be very much against for obvious reasons. So that's, that's my brief comment. I would request more time and a committee, as Nancy had suggested, to further study what the real impact here is to having the guests that have been coming during a COVID period, which is an anomaly to what's been happening over the last several years, and then we take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Pashkis. Next up, Mary Ann Lloyd. You have five minutes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Mary Ann Lloyd. I've been a property owner here, a full-time property owner now for twenty-six years, and also a real estate agent for twenty-six years, working for Seabrook Island Real Estate. First of all, I don't believe that this should be in front of the town. I think it should go to the POA, so that all property owners here on Seabrook could vote on it. When you come here to decide if you're going to, want to live here on Seabrook, come to visit, you probably rent a villa or a house, and then you go back home, decide whether you're going to purchase here on Seabrook. And you, you do, you usually rent it out to help offset the costs and so forth. And then, after three to five years, you decide you're going to buy bigger or smaller. And it's like a cycle, okay? For the past two years, we've had a lot of people move from the big cities down here to their homes or their villas because of COVID. I believe that once COVID is under control, that people are going to go back up north again to their other houses or their family, or start traveling again. I also believe that the property values here will decrease if we limit the amount of short-term rentals. So far, this year, as of October first, okay? There have been, as far as residences, there has been total sales of a hundred and seventy-eight. Last year, two thousand and twenty, for the whole year, was two hundred and eighty-six. So we're not even as many this year as we were of the total last year. That's all I have to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Next up, we have Terry Murphy. You have five minutes, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We purchased our home as an investment in two thousand and eighteen, and quite frankly, we were actually renting at the time that my husband decided to look for property because he loved it so much. And we bought a, we bought a home. We are a blended family with seven children. And we, this was a, an opportunity for us to have space for all of us and for us to be able to enjoy holidays and summer vacations as we, my husband and I are working our way towards retirement. So we do work, we do rent our property. We work with Coastal Getaways of South Carolina. We are, we are very much a part of taking care of the island. We are very much, enjoy what the island represents, and that is the, the mixture of nature and quiet and all the good stuff that comes with having a beach home. And we have actually chosen not to rent to some folks because they didn't, we didn't feel like they took care of our home the way that we thought that they should, and therefore, they probably weren't taking care of the island. So we are, and Coastal Getaways of South Carolina vets out folks, but you can't always, you know, we don't always know sometimes what happens. It's rare, but it could happen. And so we are, we are, we are pleased to work with them because we know that they are, that have the, as owners for many years, they have taken care of the island and want to continue to do so. Why, why wouldn't they? Obviously, the not being able to rent the home takes away from our capacity to, to be able to keep our home. It takes away from our children wanting to, to have that home. Our goal is that we, we enjoy it. We share it with our children. They, it is, it becomes generational as, as has been shared. We also feel like we should definitely have a say in the voting process as we, you know, we are paying, paying tax members as well. And we also feel like the gate pass issue is something that really is causing, causing issues because folks can call in as many passes as possible as they want. Obviously, when we are there and we bring our family, we're going to have a lot of people there, but we're also going to take care of the island. We, we definitely are, you know, opposed to this ordinance, and we would like to have a, a say in the matter as well. And we would like to be a part of making sure that Seabrook Island continues to be the, the slice of heaven that it is, and we look forward to be a part, being a part of, of that in our retirement. And that is, that is all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next up, we have Mary Gwynn. You have five minutes, Ms. Gwynn.
I would like to clarify that Ms. Gwynn is Mary on the line. If it is, please use the raise your hand function. Okay, thank you.
You have five minutes, Ms. Gwynn.
Hello, my name is Mary Gwynn. I'm currently residing at eighteen oh seven Long Ben, which is a villa. I started coming to Seabrook Island in nineteen seventy-seven when it was a concept. I initially purchased a lot here in nineteen eighty-four, and like Mary Ann Lloyd mentioned, we did the renting for a while, then followed by another purchase of the villa, and then initially purchased our home, which we hope to move into this December. We, like many, needed the income that the short-term rental provided in order to be able to purchase our home. And I think if you have a good rental agency, followed by a vigilant property management, you can make, you can control some of the damage being done. I disagree with putting a cap on the short-term renters. And I think, again, it is a gate pass issue more than the capping of rentals, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. Next up, we have James Edmiston. Mr. Edmiston, you have five minutes.
I'll also say if Mr. Edmiston is on the line, if your name is Jim, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand function. If Mr. Edmiston is on the line, please use the raise your hand function. I believe he is not present.
Thank you, Catherine. Mr. Edmiston, if you happen to jump in, we are passing you over for the moment. And I will now call on David Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman, you have five minutes.
Uh, thank you. Before I go on, I'd like to point out that the last presenter, Dr. Marsteller, was actually on the line. He, he came up as Bud's iPhone. A gentleman wearing glasses, when, and when you said you raised the hand function, he literally raised his hand. I don't know if he wasn't unmuting his phone or what, but he was there and he was, uh, he was waving frantically to try to be noticed, but apparently he wasn't. I, I just thought I'd point that I might want to give him an opportunity to chime in. So my name's Dave Zimmerman. I, I own or am a part owner of one twenty-five High Hammock, part of the McGecon clan, if you will. My wife is Helen McGecon, who's the daughter of Captain Angus D. McGecon. Angus discovered Seabrook Island about nineteen ninety-one, bought a lot and held on to it until his six daughters were married and started having children. And built a house on the lot in about nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. And that started a process where the family now owns two villas in High Hammock, a house on Two Hollow, and a house on Seabrook Island, and at least one of the families is about to move there to reside there permanently. As for me, my wife and I lived in Pennsylvania from nineteen ninety-five until last year, when we moved to rural Georgia. We had traveled down to Seabrook Island multiple times a year from nineteen ninety-seven through last year, and now that we're in Georgia, we, we come down there even more often. Um, I have five things I'd like to speak to. The first is, I'll just refer to and adopt Mr. Pashkis' comments. I thought that he articulated very well the concerns of the people that fall in my category, and that category is that we could not afford to have even a villa if we didn't have at least some rental income to pay the expenses. We do not seek a profit. We do not run it as a business. Um, we merely seek to get some revenue to complement, you know, what we pay to, to keep the place. So I'm afraid that anything that might limit our revenue, might limit our revenues, could possibly limit our ability to, to live there. And I, and I speak on behalf of the other owners of the other three properties because they rent as well to help pay for expenses. Thirdly, the petition that I read relies heavily on statistics. And I just want to emphasize a couple of viewpoints on statistics, and I'll, I'll I'll read a couple of quotes that, that articulate my concern about statistics more than I could. One is there are three types of, you may have heard some of these. There are three types of lies, lies, dang lies, and statistics. That's a quote by Benjamin Mizrahi. "Facts are stubborn things, but statistics are pliable," the infamous Mark Twain. Ninety-nine percent of all statistics only tell forty-nine percent of the story, and I think that's actually quite apt here. That's by, that's from Ron Delage. Lastly, "Most people use statistics like a drunk man uses a lamppost, more for support than illumination." That's by Andrew Lang, and I think that last one is telling too. Statistics can be manipulated, cherry-picked, to support whatever cause is being spoken to, as opposed to illuminating and enlightening people about what the cause is and what the underlying concerns are. Which leads me into, you know, my review of the petition. It speaks to a desired change, but I, I don't know what the underlying complaints are. There was a mention from the first presenter about the club being overrun by renters. I, I don't know how.
One minute left.
I don't know how you can tell whether people are renters or non-renters, but that's a good example of, of a problem that can be taken care of without putting caps on, on rentals. In the petition, it kind of summarizes, I think, their concern. We, and this is the, I think, third paragraph before the last. "We are simply asking to halt the growth of short-term rentals in your neighborhood and across Seabrook, and restore the balance between those of us who reside in our homes and those who operate a business by renting their properties over a period of years." I would, I would be willing to bet that the vast, vast majority of people that rent their property aren't renting it for a business. They're renting it to cover the expenses of taxes and what have you. Lastly, COVID, we, we got to stop predicting about COVID because every prediction's been wrong about when it's going to stop, but my point would be I don't think this is the time to measure people's feelings or sense about anything, particularly what's going on in Seabrook Island, because COVID is an out-of-the-box experience. People come down, they might even be celebrating more than they otherwise would. Let's let the dust from COVID settle. I think it'll be at least two years before we visit any drastic measures that are based.
Closing remarks?
On Seabrook Island. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, and thank you for pointing out that Mr. Marsteller is on the line. I will now go back and give Mr. Marsteller an opportunity to make his, Dr. Marsteller, I'm sorry, to make his presentation. Dr. Marsteller.
Sorry, sir, I'm trying. There we go. I do apologize about that before.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yeah, I was raising, raising hands. I'm more used to WebEx, not Zoom. I apologize. What I would like to start off with though is that we have, we purchased a place out here down in Spinnaker, and we purchased it approximately a year and a half ago. Like so many of the others, we are looking to, to move down here, probably after I retire in a year. Unfortunately, the people that were spoke, speaking before did not do their research. What they're, who they are talking about as far as being on Daniel Island is my son, not me. And by the way, we also looked at the Daniel Island, and yes, you can rent on Daniel Island. Not on a short-term basis. It has to be thirty days or more. I also looked in because my son owns a place, and he's also Dr. Marsteller, so everybody gets that confused. Over on Kiowa Island, and Kiowa Island has their condos and so forth, and yes, they do have different zones and so forth as far as our rentals go. But there is no, he owns a place on, in, in the, right by the sanctuary in a condo, and there are no limitations whatsoever on the amount of time that he can rent there, nor other limitations within those buildings and condos and villas. The condos and villas were, I, I would feel, developed in order to to have rentals for people that are going to come down here and possibly live for a long time, and also people to come down here and love the place and buy a villa or a condo of their own. I do not see that there is really any areas in any room that more condos or villas are going to be built on the island, so I think we're probably maxed out as far as those go. I don't know. I'm not totally opposed, as, as Kiowa's a very nice island, to having a, a rental limitation in, in the areas that are single-family homes. I think that that is very logical. However, I also think that a lot of the problems that were expressed today were problems exactly for other entities, and that's for the township. The, the club, the club overcrowdedness, that's a club problem. SPOA with the gate, that's an SPOA problem. I do not see that this is a council problem. I, I also acknowledge that the council has every right to do zoning maps and to figure out different zoning areas for different areas, and possibly even to talk about putting in caps for rentals. But I think logically that the whole thing needs to be a tremendously more study than it already has been, and that a, a committee needs to be put together in order to address the issues of not only the people that own villas and condos, but people that also own single-family homes, and I'm very, very interested in their opinion also. I know that I have not spoken for my seven and a half minutes or even five minutes, but I have said all that I need to say, I think. I appreciate. I appreciate your time and allowing me to talk today.
And with that, we have been through all who either arranged to make a presentation or who arranged to give comments.
Sir, I apologize. It does look like Jim has raised his hand. I believe that might be James Edmiston. I think he had some difficulty joining earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Edmiston. Would you like to make your comment?
Yes, sorry about that.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry, much like the other gentlemen, I, I tend to use WebEx or Skype and still struggling with Zoom, but first, let me say thank you for some time this afternoon. It's Jim Edmiston. Formal, formal name is James. I own eleven eleven Summerwind. And dear council members, I am speaking against further restrictions on short-term rentals. First, let me give you a bit of background. My wife and I purchased a Summerwind Cottage in oh-six. I'm going to be a little bit different than some of the statistics that have, that have come out. We were fortunate enough to buy it in our thirties. We have rented periodically, both on a short term and a long term, to a winter snowboard, uh, snowbird basis since then. We selected Seabrook after searching many communities along the coastal areas of North, South, uh, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, Georgia. We came to love the island amenities while visiting the island and staying in a short-term rental. We felt it offered us the best choice for enjoying the beach and club activities, which would grow with us into retirement. We also knew rental income was paramount prior to our retirement age as a way to offset the cost of owning a second home. Many of our renters return year after year and love the island. The positive interactions with these people who have enjoyed the beauty of Seabrook has been countless. Over the last fifteen years, we have been the envy of family and friends who've enjoyed visiting us on Seabrook. When not with us, many of them routinely rent weekends and weekly on the island to enjoy its amenities. Several of these people have and are searching for their retirement oasis. Most of them are going to need to rent their prospective homes prior to retirement to offset their cost of ownership. As events on the island have unfolded over the last couple of years, we're actually seriously rethinking our long-term plan. It appears that there is a small group of, of people using innuendos and, and maybe even false or, or at best misleading statements in attempt to regulate the island based on their own prejudices. I think it, it's important to have facts and figures. I saw six complaints for all of twenty twenty-one, but I haven't seen a whole lot else. Six complaints, and we're going to try to start creating ordinances and things? Uh, doesn't, doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to gel there. I think we've also heard that group talk about surrounding municipalities. Those aren't really like Seabrook Island. They don't have the same sort of interaction with three entities that cross, I guess, cross responsibilities in, in many ways. During the surprise short-term rental vote, I guess, less than a year ago, I noted during the meeting, these types of ordinances have already been struck down in North Carolina and, and parts of them in South Carolina. For those who are interested, you can see Schroder versus the City of Wilmington, where the court erased the entire ordinance the City of Wilmington created to regulate, to regulate short-term rentals. That includes rental caps. That includes all sorts of health and safety protocols that were written in the ordinances just for short-term rentals. That case was struck down, and now somebody's going to say, well. Thank you. Somebody's going to say, well, this is South Carolina. Why is North Carolina important? It's because it establishes a legal precedent that should a suit come before the Seabrook Island group. There is case precedent for the court to support its decision. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to stop trying to limit short-term rentals.
Right, thank you, Mr. Edmiston. Catherine, I think are we near an hour total now from the first presentation through the last comment?
Yes, sir, a little. Yes, sir, a little over.
A little over. There are, what I'm seeing on my screen, there are three people with hands raised. If we're already over an hour, I would be willing to hear from people that have raised their hands, allowing no more than one minute each. If you don't feel you can complete your comment in one minute, then we will not hear from you.
I show on our end that we have five hands raised.
All right, one minute each.
All right, we will start with Lisa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My comments are really relatively short, and I will keep it very brief. We are full time residents here on Seabrook. We've been property owners since 2009. And in my mind, this is absolutely a municipality issue in that there needs needs to be constructive zoning that limits short term rentals in certain areas of the island, just such as Kiowa has done. I would venture to say that any of you people that are currently renting a cottage or villa, which I have also done in the past, would be hard pressed to want to live on a street that is composed of 90% homes that are short term rentals. And so therefore, I think it is absolutely within the town councils need to listen to the voters in establishing some sort of policy and guideline as to what percentage of this island should be short term rentals and what percentage should not. That's that's all I have to say is that I would like to see at least some guidelines as to what percentage of this island would we like to be short term rentals and which percentage will we not.
Thank you. Next. Catherine.
Mr. Weiss.
One minute.
For granting me the time to speak. My name is Alan Weiss. I live at 3635 Pompano. I have the two immediately adjacent houses to me are very actively full time rented houses with occasional visits by the homeowner. Unlike what was stated, these are not summer and holiday rentals. These are all year round, full time rentals with occasional use by the neighbors. To the and and it's, this is a street of nine houses. One is under reconstruction, so let's call it eight houses. So that puts that at 25% of the houses on the street are full time rentals. The vacant lot across the street from me just sold. I, we have no idea of what's going to go there. But from what my understanding is, you can have a house of five to six bedrooms, and that would allow occupancy of 13 renters. If you have not been, okay, if you have not been negatively affected by parties and gatherings and games and noise, then you have no skin in the game. The people who are living next to the houses that are actively rented are the ones who have skin in the game. I can tell you, it's been a disaster for us.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have Ted is the iPhone. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, I have to unmute him. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Your time has started.
Okay, thank you. I'm back again. I was the first one to present. I just wanted to say that I have, I have offered to help with whatever committee work needs to be done to try to to try to sort this out and come up with a solution that would provide a cap. I have offered that in the letter I sent, page 60, I think, of the agenda. 65 is the proposed referendum. And then I wanted to say, Mr. Zimmerman made a comment about business. Well, short term rental of your house on this island is a business by definition. Dr. Marsdeller mentioned Kiowa. Kiowa does cap single family homes in their single family district to 20%. And Mr. Edmiston, unlike South Carolina, North Carolina has a state law that prohibits municipalities from regulating short term rentals. So it is different, and it is not a precedent to be used by South Carolina courts necessarily. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forloggi. Next up, Catherine.
Paul McLaughlin.
Mr. McLaughlin, one minute.
I just want to follow up on Ted's point that he made was that North Carolina has a different set of laws, and we're not aware of any litigation in South in South Carolina at all. And that the municipalities surrounding Charleston have imposed have imposed caps, and we haven't. So now we are the place that everybody wants to come to in order to establish purchased short term rentals. And I think the issue goes beyond the gate. I think to trivialize this that it's a gate issue is simply not bearing any reality. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the time. Sorry about my tech difficulties earlier.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next up, Catherine.
James Lagos. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's, that's.
One minute.
All right. I'm Jim Lagos. I own five properties on Seabrook Island. Four, four of them are single family dwellings. Basically, three of those are year long leases, okay? One is a vacation rental. The comment I want to make, the only comment is, we are all members of one Seabrook family. We all need each other. Seriously, we all need each other. Now, I have five properties. I pay five, basically, five license, I pay for five business licenses. Half of the budget of the city and Mayor Greg wrote about this in Seabrooker, half the budget of the city of town of Seabrook comes from business licenses. My wife and I pay $50,000 a year in real estate taxes. If you rent your property out, you pay roughly four times the amount of real estate taxes that you pay if you live in that house. As a senior citizen, I'm 71. If I lived in the house, I pay a quarter of the taxes. A lot of the taxes, the.
Closing remarks.
Okay, basically, I need everybody on this call. Everybody needs me. It's not a zero sum game. We need each other.
Thank you, Mr. Lagos. With that, Catherine, are there any others?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. My thanks to all who presented and made comments, and we are now back on the agenda. I will say that the town received the original petition that is the subject of the presentations and comments on October 4th, and an updated petition, updated only in respect of signers of the petition that was received on October 25th. Materials received with the original petition are accepted for the record without objection. As I said, back to the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the reports of standing committees. And with that, we will begin with public relations and communications if Ms. Fox is still on our meeting.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Greg, thank you very much. I'm still here. I'll be here till about 5:40. It's my son's 40th birthday, and I'm over on Daniel Island in a house with three kids under the age of seven, which is why I'm wearing a microphone and earplugs. As far as my updates, it's just that we have a radio test on, we had a radio test on October 17th. We've had several posts and tidelines. In fact, right now, they're running a series on the candidates that are coming up on the election, both the mayor. There's five town town council people running for four seats, and then we'll have someone running for the utility commission. Election will be November 2nd, and I've just wanted to remind everybody of that. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Next up, Public Safety Committee and Special Projects. I'll call on Councilman Goldstein to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Special projects, the road design is moving along. I'm sure everyone sees ESP out there doing their work. And so we are pleased with that. Public Safety Committee, we had our meeting this month, and we are going through the after action report from our hurricane exercise. We have addressed some of the issues. We have come to a point where some of the other issues require input from other entities such as SPOA. So we are trying to, at some point in the near future, get a joint meeting with SPOA and ourselves and Scott Cave to see if we can better address the issues that were brought up. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Goldstein. Next up, each administration and community and government relations. I'll call on Councilwoman Finke to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have a lot to report on. I've talked to council about researching some proposed revisions to the beach ordinance. Kind of put that on hold until we redo our committee structure, and we actually have like an environmental and beach committee come January. And I'll just pass on all that research about whoever takes that on. I do think that with the peak season over, we can kind of go back and look at some of the requests for the no wake zone up by the inlet and stuff that we could work on in November and December. I am going to call our Community Promotions Grants Committee together. As we went through the process this year and we looked at how we wrote that grant program, a couple of our citizen members of the committee who had experience in grant programs made some suggestions how we could clarify the program and especially clarify the application process so we can really zero in and we don't have to turn somebody down because of a misunderstanding. So that'll be something coming up for November. And again, we're redoing the committee structure and we'll pass those recommendations on whoever takes on that responsibility come January. And then I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and use this time to say to folks, if you've emailed me, I have tried to respond. If I've been on the list or copied on an email, I've tried to respond to all those emails. I think I sat down Friday and did almost 80 emails. I continue to have this problem that nobody can figure out, and virus scans don't show any problem, that my emails end up in junk, in in your junk email box if I respond to you. And Pat's tried and tried to figure it out, and we haven't been able to do it. So if you sent me an email and you expected a response and didn't get one, before you get upset that I didn't respond, please look in your junk or spam file because they show up there even when I hit respond. And I'm not creating an email out of the blue. So with that, I don't have any other comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finke. Just one thing, as you touched on, you had been looking at things to do with the beach, things having to do with the beach. We did have this discussion about considering regulation that would restrict, I guess, the use of the lanterns, flying lanterns, flaming lanterns, and mylar balloons and so forth. I believe that would be something that you would want to consider for your work with the beach ordinance.
Very definitely, and I think that that's when we roll that. I don't think there's an urgency if we look at that. So I think we would roll that into the new, whoever takes on that responsibility in our new committee structure.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Ways and Means Committee meeting. I will provide an update for the Ways and Means Committee items. Of course, the Ways and Means Committee meeting minutes have already been approved. So my update is something that will be included in the minutes. And it concerns the cooperation with the town of Kiowa Island for improvements to Johns Island roads. Representatives of the towns met with Charleston County Council Chairman Teddy Pryor on October 22nd. It is my understanding that the town of Kiowa has scheduled a meeting for the week of October 24th with representatives of Charleston County who are engaged in planning for roads on Johns Island. The towns continue to consider advocacy for improvements of Segment C, that is Bo Hickett Road from Maybank Highway to Betsy Harrison Parkway. And with that, I have nothing further concerning the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Continuing with the agenda, the next item would be Planning Commission. We have no report. The Board of Zoning Appeals, we have no report. So now we come to the reports of the ad hoc committees. And we have no report there. So reports of the town officers, I'm the first of the town officers to give a report. And an item that was not included in the Ways and Means Committee updates, a contemplated discussion with representatives of SPOA concerning short term rentals. The mayor and mayor pro tem will be meeting with representatives of SPOA on November 5th to discuss matters relating to short term rentals. So since the meeting hasn't occurred, I cannot provide any further update other than we do have a meeting scheduled. Next, we have the report of the zoning administrator. I'm sorry, the town administrator stroke zoning administrator. We will have a new zoning administrator in place on November 1st. So Joe, I believe this is your part of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Got to unmute myself. Give me one second. There we go. Just a couple items for information. First of which is a quick update on the DSO and the zoning map. I did have a meeting this morning with our consultant, Paul LeBlanc. We're trying to go through and finalize the last updates to the draft DSO. We are likely going to try to schedule one additional meeting with our advisory committee, ideally about a week to 10 days before Thanksgiving, so middle of November or thereabouts. And at that point, once we get the final draft kind of wrapped up, we intend to bring that forward to the Planning Commission, preferably as early as December to start moving forward with the adoption process. So that is moving forward. And I expect to have more information to present over the next 30 or 60 days as we get closer into the adoption timeline. Quick update on two contracts. We have issued a notice of award to Mariner Construction for the exterior maintenance and painting contract, as well as the roofing, re-roofing contract for Town Hall, both of which have been approved by the council during your last two special call meetings. So we're just waiting on the final execution of those two contracts, and we hope to have those underway in the next few weeks. A couple items I didn't have on here, just to give you a quick update. I did send out an email on Friday, but just to confirm, we did receive notice from the Municipal Association of South Carolina on Friday. We had submitted for a municipal MASC hometown economic development grant of up to 25,000 for replacement of our gateway sign up near the traffic circle, as well as Wayfinder signage. And we did receive word on Friday that we were awarded that grant. So I was happy to be able to report that, but also wanted to thank our town clerk, Catherine Watkins, for her assist and helping to get that in. So that's an item we do anticipate moving forward with in the next, the next couple of months. As the mayor stated, our new zoning administrator is scheduled to begin on Monday, November 1st. So at that point, we will be transitioning primary responsibility for all of the zoning plan reviews, the staffing for the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and other related matters will be moving to that position. And just reminder, that'll be Tyler Newman will be joining us from Hilton Head. So we would encourage you sometime over the next couple of weeks. If you get a moment, just stop by and say hello to Tyler and, you know, spend a few minutes, get to know him. He will be certainly a very valuable member of our team. We look forward to having him join us. The last item I wanted to just. our team. We look forward to having him join us. The last item I wanted to just provide, I had received a request from a member of council, happened to be out on routine patrol observing potential violations, and ran into council member Pat Fox, and she had asked a question if we had received any of the 2020 census data. So I did check after that encounter, and just wanted to give you a quick update on a few of the categories that we've received information from the Census Bureau. So I look at population, housing, occupied housing units, and occupancy rate. So in 2010, our census population was 1,714. The official 2020 census population is 2,050. So we added a net 336 additional residents. So we've had almost just a hair under 20% population growth in our town limits over a 10-year period. Number of housing units, in 2010, we had 2,203. In 2020, that number increased to 2,377 in our town limits. So we added 174 new housing units, or about an 8% increase. So you'll see, obviously, the populated, and I should add, housing units is basically the number of structures that exist on the island, whether they are occupied, not occupied, by a renter, an owner, whatever. That's just the total number of structures out there with four walls and a roof. So you'll see, we did see a higher percentage increase in population than housing units. And that's really an indication that, really looking at the next two, which is occupied housing units, what we've seen are more, obviously more houses being built, but we're now also seeing more people occupying those structures full-time. So that could mean any number of things. More people who have used those as second homes are moving here, making it their primary residence is probably the most likely. But in 2010, we had 917 occupied housing units. Occupied means that, that there's somebody living in that property. So if it's a short-term rental, it's not a occupied housing unit. If it's just a second home that the owner uses a couple times of the year, it's not an occupied housing unit. This is basically somebody's using that as their principal residence or principal place of the boat. So 2010, we had 917 occupied housing units. 2020, 1,118. So a net increase of 201, which is 20, 21.9%. So not only more housing units in the town, but more of them are being occupied full-time either by the owner or by a long-term renter. Which last one's basically just taking the total number of occupied housing units, dividing it by the total number of housing units, and that gives us a occupancy rate. In 2010, that number was 41.6%. In 2020, it jumped up to 47%. So that's a 5.4 percentage point increase over 10 years, or a net of 13% increase over the same period. So I did just want to take a moment to provide you that information. Not that we have council districts and things that have to be redrawn, but, you know, typically larger communities, they would use this information for the purpose of redistricting, drawing new wards, those type things. You know, for us, it's just good to get the information, just to give us a snapshot in time. Unlike the American Community Survey, which is put out every year by the Census Bureau, those are rolling estimates. The information that comes out from the decennial census, that's the actual full census. So this is what our recorded population and the number of housing units and occupancy was in 2020. So with that, just wanted to provide that as information. If anybody has any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from council for Joe? Hearing none. All right. Well, Joe, I take it that concludes your remarks. So next up, I guess we have an opportunity for council members, does any member of council have anything to add at this point? Hearing quiet. I will assume not. So I will now introduce the Chair of the Utility Commission to give the report for the Seabrook Island Utility Commission, Annie Smith Jones.
Thank you, Meg or Greg. I appreciate that. So we had our Seabrook Island Utility meeting on October 20. At the time, our financial report was as follows. We remain within the normal variation of our budget for the year. The net income for the month of September was a surplus of 1,109,003, excuse me, 109,342. Our capital charges for the month of September were 90,262, and after you adjust for bonds, notes, principal payments, and capital, our September showed a surplus of $27,842. Year-to-date reflects an operating income of 691,000, and after our capital expenditures of 640,000 and debt service principal, the year-to-date there was a surplus of 100, there is a surplus of 104,134 compared to 123,208 for as of September 30, 2020. Our available cash as of September 30, 2021 is approximately $2.7 million. On our operations side, for our water, our sewer, excuse me, our effluent quality continues to meet primitive requirements during the month. The daily average flow is .419 million gallons per day, with our maximum daily flow of .709 million gallons for the month. Our total effluent and deep water pump to Seabrook Island Golf Course for irrigation was 2.3 million gallons of effluent and 16.75 million gallons from our deep well. Total effluent and deep well pump to Oak Point Golf Course was 7.1 million gallons of effluent. For water distribution, we delivered 34 million, little over 34 million gallons of water for the month compared to 31 million, .5 gallons compared to last year. Some of our operations that we completed during the month, we installed nine new meters, we fixed five service lines, we had sewer lateral repairs, one, we located, Mr. Utility locating, 95 locates, we did three new sewer connection inspections, and we had to replace three service lines and their saddles for this particular month. Additionally, we sent our pump out, one of our pumps, we have two main pumps, we sent one out to be, to get a total rebuild. And then we also did our monitoring well sampling for the month. And our next meeting is scheduled for November 17. And that concludes, Mayor, my report.
Thank you, Annie. I had sent over, I can't remember now, but I'm thinking it was a notice of another opportunity for some kind of hazard mitigation grant.
Yes.
Recently.
Yes. I've, on both of the two things you've more recently sent over, one, as you know, and you've called a meeting, that is with Lee Van Sneddy, and I've also sent that over to our plant manager, Tommy, to take a look at that. In addition to the particular grant you're referring to, I've also provided that to him so that he can review it, and if we can possibly come up with some appropriate uses of the money, believe me, we will.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Annie. I thought that this was one of those competitive deals. It's not, everybody that, everybody that wants a grant gets a grant. I think you kind of stand in line with other people.
Yeah. Well, we will take a look at that. You know, there's always pros and cons of doing that. You know, we, we did for FEMA, we, we utilized FEMA in order to put three new generators into Seabrook at our pump stations.
Right.
You know, the, the good thing about it was is that FEMA picked up approximately three quarters of the cost of that. The bad part maybe is because you're under FEMA guidelines, the actual cost of the generators and the process that you have to go through and the regulations and, well, not the regulations, because you'd have regulations and certain things that you have to, are required regardless, but it costs more to be able to enter and work within their programs than if we did it without. But then again, they pick up three quarters of the cost. So, you know, there's pros and cons of looking at all of this, and you really need to sort of take a hard look and.
All right. Thanks very much, Annie. Any questions for Annie, from members of council? Hearing none. Next up, petitions received, referred or disposed of. We have, of course, the petition from Preserve Seabrook. It's our home that was received October 4, 2021, and for the record, we have acknowledged receipt of an updated petition on October 25. For avoidance of doubt, council is not voting today on any ordinance or resolution concerning the proposed referendum of the petition received October 4, or the updated petition received October 25. Further, it is to be understood that were counsel to determine that further regulation of short-term rentals by the town be appropriate, the process to achieve that regulation would afford, afford all interested parties an opportunity to be heard through outreach and/or public hearings. As for the petition, it is noted that state law requires that a referendum question be made available no later than 45 days in advance of the relevant election. Notwithstanding that today's agenda allowed both presentations and comments concerning the petition, the result of the untimeliness of submission of the petition is that the request for placing the proposed referendum on the ballot for the town's 2021 election is denied. In view of the extraordinary volume of comments received by the town concerning the petition, I propose to reinvigorate the town's ad hoc committee for short-term rentals with a charge to review the petition and related materials to identify topics for factual inquiry. It is my intention to the ad hoc committee report to council with recommendations for such inquiries, including the assertion of unchecked growth of short-term rentals. We just heard concerning the census data, which I think is relevant to the assertion of unchecked growth of short-term rentals. It is my expectation that results of such inquiries may produce information that would be worthy of sharing with Sapoa, as Sapoa and the town undertake cooperative effort to address matters of concern to residents. I feel compelled to note that I find the proposed referendum objectionable as pertaining to a legislative matter for council while excluding participation by non-resident property owners who do not have the right to vote in a town election. The petitioners were made aware that changes to zoning are not susceptible of address by referenda, but have persisted in pursuing a non-binding referendum in an apparent attempt to induce council to effect such changes. And with that, we will proceed to ordinances for second reading. We have three ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 2021-11, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter 32, Waterways and Beaches, Article 2, Beachfront Management, Division 2, Restrictions, Section 32-42, Vehicle Use, so as to amend the requirements relating to the operation of motor vehicles on the beaches of Seabrook Island, as I commented earlier today. An aspect of the amendment to this ordinance, by this ordinance, is to allow the operation of Class 1 pedal-assist bicycles on the beach. With that, I'll invite our town administrator to add his comments. Anything to add, Joe?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I was trying to pull up on the screen just to highlight that section. You've primarily covered it. Nothing new has changed since first reading, but we are looking, the, the primary change is on the Class 1 pedal-assist bicycles or e-bikes, that basically as long as they are permitted by the Property Owners Association for use behind the gate within the Seabrook Island Development, and as long as they display a valid POA decal while operating on the beach, then those types of bicycles would be treated for the purpose of our ordinance as bicycles and not vehicles. All the other changes are primarily just minor cleaning up the existing ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Joe. May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2021-11 as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance 2021-11? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of ordinance 2021-11, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye. Joe, I believe that makes it unanimous. Ordinance 2021-11 is approved. Ordinance 2021-12, and ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the consideration of zoning map amendments, that is rezonings, annexation requests, and certain subdivision approvals for a period not to exceed 180 days. As I said earlier today, this moratorium is in connection with the town's process for adoption of the rewritten and extremely revised Development Standards Ordinance. Joe, would you like to add any comments?
Sure. This is not an across-the-board moratorium on all development or any changes. This is just a targeted moratorium on three particular items. One is a moratorium or pause on the consideration of any request to change the town's zoning map. The purpose for that is the new DSO will include with it a companion ordinance to adopt a new zoning map. Second, it would include a temporary moratorium on the consideration of any request to annex property into the town limits, which is not already part of the town limits. So we're not going to be changing the zoning districts on the map. We're not actually going to be changing the map of the town itself with no rezonings and no annexations while the DSO is pending. And lastly, is a moratorium, not all subdivision requests, but for all practical purposes, major subdivision requests. So our ordinance does include a limited number, that basically treats them as administrative subdivisions that can be approved by the zoning administrator, don't have to go through Planning Commission. So those includes if you're subdividing land into parcels with five acres or more. Uh so those includes if you're subdividing land into parcels with five acres or more, there's no new streets created or modified. If you're combining or recombining portions of previously platted and recorded lots. And not increasing uh the number of lots, so uh you could have something where. Somebody buys two lots and they want to combine them into one, that's fine, you're not creating any new lot. If you're doing just a shift of a property line, maybe uh two property owners are doing a swap or. One's getting a little bit more in the back, one's getting a little bit more in the front, they're just shifting the line perfectly fine. Um, the uh subdivision of land for public acquisition, so if it's a. You know, pump station right away, something like that, that's not going to be affected in any subdivision plat, which is created and approved by a judicial act. Um but basically anything else, if we're going in, if it's a um uh preliminary plat, a final plat. Uh for basically creating new lots or subdividing new property. Uh if it doesn't meet one of these five exemptions, then it would be uh placed on hold until the new. Uh D S O goes into effect, uh at which time it would be considered based on uh the new regulations in place at the time.
Thank you, Joe. May I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve as presented. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye, Joe, I believe that was unanimous, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve is approved. Last up, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina. Chapter two administration, article five. Financial administration, division two, purchasing requirements so as to amend the policies and procedures. Related to the, to the procurement of goods and services by the town, as I said earlier. And aspect of the amendments being made by this ordinance is to change the thresholds. For the processes that must be followed as we make procurements, so. Our thresholds were rather old. In terms of years since they were last updated. And the town administrator has brought forth the need. To update those thresholds to be in line with what we encounter in the marketplace. Joe, do you have any further comments?
Uh no, I think you covered it, uh no changes from the first reading version.
Very good, thank you. May I have a, a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen as presented. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye, Joe, that makes it unanimous, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen is approved as presented. Next up, ordinance for first reading. I think that's next up, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina. Chapter two, administration, article three, procedures. Committees and ordinances, section two dash one eleven. Standing committees so as to amend the town's advisory committees. And article four, officers and departments. So as to establish provisions related to the position of town administrator. I remind members of council that this is a, an extensive revision of the town's. Standing committees stroke committee organization, which will. I will say in one sense, it will streamline our committee organization, but in another sense. It will certainly bring clarification to the town's committee organization. The other aspect of this ordinance is to actually provide for. The existence of a town administrator expressly, which uh happened to be an omission. From the town code, although the town administrator was called on to do many things. The position of town administrator had not previously been defined. Uh Jody, have anything to add concerning ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen?
Um, nothing to add, we discussed it pretty extensively at um executive session, just one. Question I wanted to throw out, we do have this ordinance having an effective date, basically immediate, immediately upon. Um, second reading, which is scheduled for the November meeting. Um, I guess the one question is, did you want to make it effective January one? Uh or upon the um commencement date of the uh new council terms following the election. Uh next week, that's really the only thing you might warrant some discussion is. Do you want it to be immediate or have it be effective, just say January one?
From my perspective, Joe, it would be best if it were made effective on January one.
Yeah, and that, that would be my recommendation, doesn't really make that much difference, but I would just recommend sticking in a January one effective date.
Any other comments?
I would agree with the January one, however, I'd like to, if possible. Let the community know of the new um committee, new structure. And amend our volunteer form if we could, as soon as, as soon as this is passed, so that. We would have a um several people who might be applying or filling out that little. Um application that we have if they would like to volunteer when this starts in January one, that would be my only. Only, I guess, caveat.
Good catch, Pat, I think that's an excellent idea, you can certainly. Alert the community that we will be changing the committee structure effective January one. And uh give them the information they will need for the volunteer form.
We can certainly do that.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen. Being amended so as to make it effective on January one, twenty twenty-two. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Aye, Joe, I think that we have managed to approve it, I hope that we had a motion to approve.
I was gonna say, I didn't jot down who made a motion.
Okay, well, in that case, may I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen with the amendment?
So moved.
Making it effective January one, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
And a second.
A second, second.
All in favor, signify your approval by saying aye.
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 I think we've covered it, Joe.
We got it, we're good.
All right, thank you.
And I, I think, I think the cat tried to second that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I apologize. He's getting jealous here that my time is not focused on him.
Yeah, okay, all right, next item on the agenda miscellaneous business, we have resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four. A resolution directing the expenditure of unbudgeted revenues from the Charleston County Accommodations Tax Program. Uh we received revenues that we had not included in our budget, hence unbudgeted revenues. And council had a discussion at a recent special call meeting. Of how we would actually allocate the expenditure of those unbudgeted revenues. So, Joe, if you want to go over what the allocation was of our expenditures, you are welcome to do so, if you feel that's not necessary. We will proceed with approval of the resolution.
Uh, the only thing I would point out, when we talked about it, we, we said forty-four thousand in estimated uh revenue, I. Don't believe we've received those funds yet, we'll have to uh double check with Catherine on that, but. We had discussed doing three thousand towards the Christmas party and seasonal light display. I just like round numbers, so I put in forty, forty thousand for beach patrol and four thousand for. Um, the holiday um lights and the uh, the Christmas party event. If you want it to be forty-one and three, that's fine too, um but uh those were the uh, the two items that we put in here.
Well, I gather that we are not in doubt that we will receive forty-four thousand, and I am uh perfectly willing. To uh agree with the disposition as reflected in the resolution. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four as presented, please signify your approval. By, oh, wait a minute, I forgot to call for a motion to approve. Resolution twenty twenty-one day twenty-four, may I have a, a, a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one day twenty-four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've had discussion, so, all in favor of approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, please signify your approval. By saying aye.
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 Aye, Joe, resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four is approved as presented. All right, the next and next to last item on the agenda is public comments, anyone participating in the video conference. And wanting to comment concerning today's proceedings may do so by clicking the raise hand button. Under the participants tab, anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning today's. Proceedings may do so by pressing star nine to raise your hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand to speak only once. Every effort will be made to call on all speakers in the order they have raised their hands. When called on to speak, please make sure your audio is unmuted, if we call on you and do not hear anything. We will ask you to unmute yourself, if we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which to provide their comments, each speaker will be informed. When there are thirty seconds remaining, once allotted time expires. The speaker's audio will again be muted. Do we have any citizens who have indicated they wish to make a comment? Indicating that by raising their hands. Raising their hands with the facility provided, please.
We don't have any raised at the moment, no.
Anyone, anyone, anyone. I take it no one wishes to comment further?
Mr. Zimmerman, if you would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function.
You are muted and I cannot hear you.
He hasn't used the raise his hand function, but he has indicated like waving his hands, would we like to unmute him, sir?
Go ahead. You hear a comment, Mr. Zimmerman?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know how to raise my hand, I, I, from the moment you said that at the beginning of the meeting, I'm gonna try to figure that out. It said star nine, I'm accessing through desktop. And I've pressed star nine and nothing was happening, so I apologize for that.
That's for a telephone conference, on the video conference, you use the raise hand button under the participants tab.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to figure that out, I don't, I don't see it. But my, my only comment was, I forgot to mention that I appreciate the council. I'm an attorney and I'm well aware of how, how difficult your tasks are. And I always make sure that those who serve in public service like you. Know that there are uh met people like me. Who appreciate your service regardless of whatever decision. You make on items on the agenda, I, I, I trust. That those who are elected or appointed are doing the best they can. To make the best decision they can for everybody involved, so I just wanted to make sure that you all know that, that you're appreciating, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman. Are there any other raised hands, anyone else waving? I gather not. With that, I will obtain a motion to adjourn today's council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion on the topic of adjournment? Surely not, especially from Councilwoman Fox. Very well, all in favor of adjourning the town council meeting for the month of October twenty twenty-one, please signify your approval of adjournment by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Joe, that was unanimous, we are adjourned.
See, see you guys on Thursday for budget talks.
Yeah, see you Thursday.
We, we can let Pat go to play in Call of Duty or whatever she's doing with that headset.
Well, I could turn it on and off, so it made it, I could, I could get rid of the, you being able to hear all the craziness going on here.
I need one of those for the cats.
Uh, thanks very much, all, we will see you on Thursday.